Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. It's 1:30 a.m., 1:30 a.m., right. Yeah, it's 1:30 p.m. And we did pull item 19E on this agenda. So we're going to start with, we've got four items that all relate to the same issue, and I know we're going to have a disclosure here in a minute. But I think what we're going to do, in fact, what we are going to do is we're going to take all four items together so we can talk about all of them. That would be 19A, 19B, 19C, and 19D. So we'll just open a public hearing when we get to these. We'll talk about all of them. So, and then if we need to vote on all of them, we'll take the vote, say, or out of them, so we know how that came out. Everybody okay or not? Everybody understand it? All right, so we're not, you know, don't worry about, say whatever you need to say. If it relates to one or the other, don't worry about it. We'll take them all, and then we'll make sure that we comply with the open meeting law. Otherwise, the DA over there will ring us all out. Okay, all right. Supervisor Bunkowski.
NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. My business partners in NAIA Alliance have a business relationship with Nevada Builders Alliance, the applicant in the matters coming before us, which are items 19A, B, C, and D. Because this is a substantial and continuing relationship, the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my position would be affected by this private commitment. Therefore, I will not be participating on these four items. And I will leave the dials.
Any other, thank you, thank you, Supervisor. Any other disclosures?
Yeah.
Yeah, what happens if we all disclose there, Adriana?
When we go home.
All right. Anybody else? Any other ones? Okay. Are we ready to go? So we're taking all four? All right. And that disclosure applies to all four. All right, go.
Thank you, Mayor, Board, Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. I'd like to start with background on this property. In June 21st, 2001, the Board of Supervisors zoned the subject property, and I'll put that up on the map, zoned the subject property as neighborhood business, as well as adopted a resolution of intent. The resolution of intent had essentially five primary substance comments. First, it limited the use of this property, the permitted use, the accessory use, or the conditional use, to an office for the Builders Association of Western Nevada. It also said that if the Builders Association of Western Nevada were to sell, it would be responsible for rezoning the property back to the Mobile Home 6,000, and the structure could only be sold as a residence. The resolution of intent limited the structure to a single-story in height. It had some language regarding specific landscaping required along the northern and eastern property lines, and it limited the signage to two feet by three feet. The subject property is 8,276 square feet. Most recently, the property has been used as an office for the Nevada Builders Alliance. The Nevada Builders Alliance has moved its office, but they are not seeking to sell the property. So they are trying to identify a use for the property. Given the resolution of intent, there is no use for this property because it was that limited. What is before the Board today are four requests. There's a zoning map amendment to rescind the resolution of intent, which I just described to you. A request for a planned unit development, which would limit the uses of the land, limit the building height to the single story, which is the language that was in the resolution of intent, as well as limit the signage to two feet by three feet, which is also the language that was in the resolution of intent. There's an appeal before you of the Planning Commission's decision regarding a special use permit for a childcare facility. And there's an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision regarding a variance concerning parking for the childcare facility. I'm going to speak to the zoning map amendment first. I spoke to the resolution of intent in the background. The scope of the resolution, or the zoning map amendment, is to rescind the resolution of intent. The Board did consider this a few months ago, and you were not comfortable rescinding the resolution of intent and leaving the zoning as neighborhood business. The applicant agreed to pursue a PUD, and you asked staff to go with the applicant back to the Planning Commission with a request for a PUD that would limit the land uses. Since the resolution of intent was created through zoning map amendment, we're seeking to rescind it through zoning map amendment. As we discussed last time we talked about this, in my opinion, this is an awkward tool. It's not addressed in the municipal code, and there are awkward limitations. The Planning Commission reviewed the request to rescind the resolution of intent at its meeting of May 27, 2017, and recommended approval based on the ability to make the required findings via a vote of three to one, two absent, one vacancy.
What was one again?
Three to one.
Well, what was the substance of the vote?
Rescind the resolution of intent. So per the Board's direction, we did go back to the Planning Commission with a request for a planned unit development that would limit the land uses. The applicant also included in the planned unit development, as I mentioned, the limitations to a single story and the limitation on the size of the signage. In terms of limitation on land use, and this is in your PACM pages 328 and 329, let's start with what do we do when we have a planned unit development? And we've talked about this before. A planned unit development is like a second layer of zoning, if you will. I call it often an overlay. And what you can do with a planned unit development is you can limit the uses, but you cannot add the uses. So what you have on the screen and in your PACM pages 328 to 329 are the uses that the applicant is seeking permission to have in his planned unit development. So it would be neighborhood business planned unit development. Planned unit developments also have certain development standards, or I'll call them dimensional criteria. But per Section 1709005, the Board of Supervisors is authorized to modify those standards after considering the statement of objectives under the PUD. Statement of objectives includes requirements or objectives regarding health, welfare, and safety, as well as states the PUD should produce developments which meet or exceed the city's standards of open space, access to light and air, pedestrian and vehicular circulation, and produce a variety of land uses which complement each other and harmonize with the existing and proposed land use in the vicinity. The planned unit development before you does not meet two of the standards. Those two standards are, one, it doesn't meet the five-acre minima, that's a little more than 8,000 square feet, and it also does not meet the 20-foot perimeter setback. It does not meet this on the west side adjacent to the post office, where I believe the setback is five feet. Staff finds these modifications are consistent with the statement of objectives. Planning Commission reviewed the request for the planned unit development at its meeting of July 26 and voted five to one with one vacancy to recommend approval based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the following changes in the land uses. One, they requested that single-family dwelling be in allowed use versus a conditional use. And secondly, they requested that a childcare facility be removed from the list of conditional uses, thus making a childcare facility not permitted in the neighborhood business PUD at this particular site. The Planning Commission's decision was focused on finding five, which talks about the relationship being beneficial or adverse, and the planned unit develop, you look at the relationship vis-à-vis the planned unit development on the neighborhood where the proposed use is to be established. Terms of the special use permit, the Planning Commission considered the request for a special use permit for a childcare facility on the subject property at its meeting of May 24, 2017. Per the applicant, the maximum number of children permitted, based on the state's calculations, would be 36 children. The applicant at the Planning Commission meeting amended his request to modify the days of operation to weekdays only, and he modified the hours of outdoor use to 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Overall hours of operation would be 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The subject property is located on Randall adjacent to the post office property. The Planning Commission does have the authority to issue a special use permit, making seven required findings effect in the affirmative. The May 24 meeting was a special meeting of the Planning Commission due to the number of applications that they had. They actually had two meetings in May. Because they had the special meeting, only four commissioners were able to participate. After conducting their public hearing on May 24 on this request for a special use permit and deliberating, there was a motion for denial. And that motion was based on the inability to make finding two, which addresses peaceful enjoyment and neighborhood compatibility. That motion did not receive a second. There was then a motion to approve the special use permit based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the operations occurring Monday through Friday, the revised outdoor hours being limited to 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report, which included a limitation of 20 children. The vote on this motion was two-two, so it did not pass. Therefore, the request for the special use permit was not approved. This is the decision being appealed to you. In terms of the variance, sorry, I'm ignoring my slides. We'll go there. In terms of the variance, at the meeting where the Planning Commission considered the special use permit for childcare, it considered the variance on parking. Per Division Two of our development standards, childcare facilities require a parking space for each employee plus a loading and unloading area. The applicant anticipates having four employees and would re-require to have four onsite spaces. The applicant is proposing to provide one onsite space and to use on-street parking to accommodate the additional employee parking. The Planning Commission voted four oh to deny this requested variance due to the inability to make finding one, which states that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including shape, size, topography, and location of surroundings. That strict application of the zoning ordinance would deprive the subject property of the privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity or under identical zoning classifications. As the mayor alluded to, you do have four separate requests before you. Staff would suggest that you take them separately with the, the first would be a motion on the PUD. The second would be introduction of an ordinance regarding the zoning map amendment. Should you not include a childcare facility in the PUD? Or should you not approve number two? You cannot approve the SUP for childcare. If there's a different outcome on those, you can go ahead and consider the special, the appeal of the special use permit on the child. You'll consider it anyway, but you won't be able to make the finding of consistency with other provisions of Title 18. And then you'll take the action on the Planning Commission's decision regarding the variance as your fourth action item. So that was a brief overview. I'm happy to answer questions, and the applicant, Erin West, is present.
Okay, well, I think we'll have some commission, Board questions, and then we'll open it up to the public and hear from Erin, then hear from the public. Okay? All right, questions, go.
Hope, could you do me a favor and go back to the list of the permitted? Okay, so I'd like a little more understanding. If you look at the top of the primary permitted uses and the Planning Commission struck the allowed uses in Section 18.04115, general office, can you give me a little bit on that? Because I know one of their other items that you're not recommending, just because of the way PUDs work, is that the conditional use to go back to a residence, which was in the original letter of intent. But if we, does that give me residential office? And they're striking the section that would let single-family be at regular use without a special use permit? So I'm trying to get the house back in without a special use permit to meet the original letter of intent. So can you walk me through whether we should fix that top section?
We certainly could. The way that the zoning codes crafted, if you will, is it kind of builds on different zoning districts. So when you look at your neighborhood business, what you see struck from here is it's telling you, if this was just plain old neighborhood business and you interpreting it, it tells you all those uses that are allowed in general office are going to be allowed. Then you go to your general office, and it's going to tell you that all those uses in residential office are allowed. So then you go to your residential office, and it's not referring you to anything, so you get to stop. So you're correct. That top portion in neighborhood business does allow for the uses of residential office and general office. What you have in front of you today is what the applicant requested. So the Planning Commission did not make those strike-throughs, with the exception that, well, I, actually, this reflects exactly what the applicant requested. It does not reflect what the Planning Commission recommended. So the way the staff report reads is one of the alternatives is if the Board would like to change the use of, the list of uses from what the Planning Commission recommended, you know, that is within your purview, and we have noticed accordingly.
Good. So we could put back in permitted uses of general, something to the intent of only residential office, section of the general office, or, anyway, we could craft some language that then would make, they could put it back to a house without getting a special use permit, is what I'm after. Back to a single-family dwelling, which meets the original letter of intent. So just keeping that in mind as we move through this. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to move to the fourth item, the variance. Could you go into a little more detail on the parking issues involved and not only let me know what the Planning Commission did, but what the staff recommendation was? I just want to get it on the record.
Yes. I have up on the board a picture of the front of this building, which I'm tempted to call a house, but it's not a house, but it looks like a house. And when it was approved and the landscaping put in, the intent at that time was to make it look like a house, make it similar to the other houses in the area. Therefore, it doesn't have a parking lot in front of it, it has a landscaped area in front of it. If we go to our next page, we see the specifics of the site conditions there. And what you'll see is where they're proposing to have the loading and unloading, and then you see 150 linear feet along the wall of the post office area. In my observations, prior to the Planning Commission visiting the site and evaluating this request for variance, I did find that there was adequate parking along that road. Our transportation folks found there was adequate parking. I didn't find that other people were utilizing the parking. And the staff did recommend approval of this request because it's just unusual. It's next to a big parking lot of a post office, and so, with a wall. And so folks aren't really parking there, and so, and it's lawful on-street parking. We also recognize that there was a value to having the building blend with the other, the residential character, if you will, as opposed to lining it with a parking lot in the front. And so the staff was able to make the findings in the affirmative and did recommend approval subject to conditions. And the staff report, which reflects the staff's findings, is part of the record. It's in your packet.
Yeah, I read that. And as I understand it, the former transportation director, who's no longer here, supported that as well, right?
That is correct. And Stephen Potte from our Development Engineering Division is present, if you want to go a little deeper on that. But we definitely consulted with the traffic folks over in Public Works, as well as our Development Engineering team, in coming to our conclusion on the findings for the variance.
Hope, I need some help wrapping my mind around the reasoning for the Planning Commission to deny the childcare facility. And the reason I ask this is we have many preschools and childcare facilities in residential settings throughout our town. We have one on Curry Street across from Old Mike's Pharmacy, which is in a residence. We have one on Division Street, which is Little Blessings. St. Teresa's has a childcare, and it's in a residential area with a school. So I need to understand what the reasoning is for not supporting this.
I'd like to say my takeaway was, the reasoning was the lack of neighborhood compatibility, but I can't really say that because there was a motion to deny based on neighborhood compatibility, and it didn't get a second.
I know.
The discussion at the public hearing focused primarily on traffic and neighborhood compatibility, noise and things from, from the outside use of the building. And, and so it's interesting. I think the other, the other thing happening at the Planning Commission, and I think once you have the benefit of public comment, you'll, you'll be seeing where they were sitting. But the other thing that happened is they had just considered the resolution of intent. So I think they sort of felt, look, we just opened up all these uses. Let's find a use that's going to be a better fit, as opposed to the childcare facility. Although I can't, I can't tell you any more than that specifically because it wasn't a denial, it was just not an approval.
So during the Planning Commission meeting, did the commissioners discuss the items on the list itself and say why this type of business is okay and childcare is not? Because one of them, like, I was looking on the list, and I'm trying to decide, why is not a photography studio okay? I guess I'm, I'm looking for the rationale and the reasoning on the record because I guess our job up here is to say, did the preponderance of evidence that they had to make their decision, was there a good basis for that decision? Not whether I personally or necessarily agree, but was what they looked at sufficient to make their decision? And I guess that's part of our problem, is it was a, it was a two-two, and they didn't approve, that they couldn't make a finding, so that, that it wasn't compatible. So I'm looking for, was there items on the record that discussed the individual types of businesses, or did they just take it and only talk about the childcare because that's what the residents surrounding it were concerned about?
They considered the SUP for childcare while in advance of the consideration of the PUD. So those two paths did not really cross. And another thing I just remembered about when they considered the SUP, which I want to mention, is the staff's recommendation was a limit on 20 children. The applicant was not agreeable to that limit. And so when the Planning Commissioner made the motion, received a second on it, he was making a motion for something the applicant had gotten on the record as not agreeing to. And he was making a motion for a limitation. So I'm not certain if those no votes were no to the limitation because they knew the applicant would not agree to it, or if it was, at least one was the neighborhood compatibility. In terms of the uses and the strike-throughs, and I put the list back up on the screen, this was considered with the planned unit development. Again, this list was prepared by the applicant, not by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission reviewed this list. So in reviewing this list at the request of the applicant, well, not at the request of the applicant, I'll say this first. In looking at this list, they said, no, we don't believe a childcare facility is appropriate. At that meeting, we had six commissioners present, not four. Sort of as part of that discussion, the applicant said, fine, you can say a childcare facility is not appropriate, but don't make me get a special use permit for the single-family house. And so the Planning Commission said, yeah, we agree with that. The single-family house should be in allowed use, he shouldn't have to get a special use permit. So really, in my estimation, looking at the planned unit development, those are really the only two uses that the, the Commission had specific discussion on.
It's a little odd to have a two-two vote come up on an appeal, but it is what it is. And I think that, you know, part, part of me would say, you know what, go back to Planning Commission and make a decision. And the other part of me, probably the larger part of me says, you know, it's time to, time to fix this issue one way or the other, however we get it done. So let me ask you, and Hope, you may not know, or maybe somebody else knows out there, what was, when this was built, when this thing that looks like a home was built, were there other homes around it? I mean, how did it come to be that we have a business in, in the middle of what is a residential area?
Who was first?
I mean, because, I guess, you know, at the end of the day, if, and it's just, maybe it's just anecdotal, but you know, if I, if I had a home there and I had somebody build a nice home right next to me, and even though they're running a business out of it, I get used to what that's all about, and then all of a sudden, you know, I, I have something that looks like a home, but then it's operating a different type of business out there. I don't understand how that all came to be about.
My short answer is I don't know what got built first. My longer answer that I'm looking for right now is, and I just found it, in the resolution of intent, there is wording that says, "The Builders Association of Western Nevada must construct a modified standard plan of a residential unit as offered by Richard Homes and Development, which will serve as Bond's office. The structure must have the same architectural style, materials, and colors as the rest of the residential units in the residential subdivision." So clearly, there was the anticipation that the rest of the residential subdivision would be built out with houses. What came first, I can't speak to.
Maybe Mr. West can.
Like a business office for the.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's like a business office for, you know, it's a showcase for a tract home, and then all of a sudden, you know, I got that, but now that's going to turn into a beauty shop. I just want to, you know, and I, I know that's probably an incorrect analysis there, but, this is an odd duck, no matter how you, no matter how it quacks, it's an odd duck. So Erin, why don't you come on up and talk to us? I mean, this is technically an appeal and all that stuff, but let's just get it all out on the record here. It's a public hearing. Anybody can say what they want to say, so.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Mayor. Supervisors, for the record, Erin West with Nevada Builders Alliance. And, and just to clarify your last comment, the, the zone change and the PUD are merely recommendations from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors. You guys have ultimate authority there. And then the, the, obviously, the appeal of the SUP and the variance are the other items. Based on the conversation you were just engaged in, the, the reason that this office came to be in that location is that the developer of that property, basically, the, the association was looking for an office location. The developer offered that property to them as a donation to the organization. It was the first building built in that area, basically, one year after the post office. And so we, we were kind of the first ones in there. And then through donations and some money that was scraped together, they, you know, put the office together. And, and over the, over the years, you know, I can appreciate that we didn't have a tremendous amount of traffic on a daily basis, but there were, you know, there were several times during the year, and even during a month, where we'd have board meetings that, you know, board meetings consisted of 15 to 20 people. We'd have events there, education events, social events, that, you know, were 30 to 50, you know, if not bigger. So, so there, there has been, you know, pretty reasonable commercial activity in that area since its inception. I think in, in terms of what's been laid out to you, I think Hope did a very good job of really covering how we got to where we're at. The, the challenge from our end is that because the resolution of intent only contemplated us selling the property, that's really what kind of kicked off this whole thing, right? We, it's a wholly owned asset of the organization. You know, we had a tremendous opportunity to jump into a new office situation. We've, you know, rehab an older building, you know, go in with some, some partners on it and really create, you know, a great space. you know, a great space. We're very excited about that. And that left us with, what do we do here? We, essentially, it was decided that at the time, at the time that we were contemplating this, and it has been talked about, the fact that it, from the outside, it does look like a house. It doesn't have a kitchen, or it doesn't have a full kitchen. It has two bathrooms, but they're not full bathrooms from the sense that they don't have bathtubs or showers. Literally, they're just toilets and sinks. So and the layout has been carved out in such a way that, you know, with a conference room and offices, and so it would be a substantial improvement to go back and convert that to a house. And so based on consultation with real estate folks and so forth, we thought the best path was to pursue another commercial endeavor there. As it relates to, and essentially, that led us to the zone change to remove the resolution of intent. As we discussed at the last meeting on this, that opened it up to several uses that then the neighbors became concerned with. So we were supportive of going back, going through the PUD process, restricting those number of uses. And to Supervisor Bagwell's point, I think originally, when we took a shot at this, it was, what, you know, let's basically take it, let's take the least impactful and see if we can get the neighbors behind it. And honestly, after sharing the list with the neighbors, we really didn't get any pushback from anything other than the daycare facility, right? Now, as we maybe move a little bit further down, I would maybe ask for some additional consideration for some things that have come to light as we've gone through this process, is possibly allowing more uses in terms of health and fitness, like yoga, massage therapy, chiropractic, you know, Pilates. There might be an opportunity there as well, which, you know, I guess you can ask the neighbors that are here whether or not those would be deemed, you know, compatible. But it seems pretty less, you know, pretty minor. So we've kind of worked through the zone change, the PUD, to get where we're at. As it relates, and then really on the variance, the variance goes back to the idea that, and Hope, is there any chance you could go to that slide that shows the street for me? I'll just talk about the variance now because this is a very unique, you know, situation. Very rarely do you see a, where literally you have two sides of a very wide thoroughfare that are, there's no driveway entrance, there's, you know, there's free access to that for parking for anybody in the area, but yet there's really no demand on it from the neighbors. They all have their parking, they all have their parking in front of their facilities and in front of their buildings, in front of, you know, in their garages, so forth. So it's a very unique situation. And that's where we thought, in the interest of trying to maintain the character of what's there, that let's utilize some of that parking that's on the street. So and I would submit to you that regardless of the use that we're asking for under the PUD, any of those uses are going to require the variance. So I think what I would ask is if, at the end of the day, if we get to a list of uses that are allowed under the PUD, that then we also approve a variance, you know, for parking based on those uses, right? So that we're not constantly coming back and forth and fighting over that. It seems consistent. And then let's get to the elephant in the room, which is the daycare. In our pursuit of tenant for the building, originally, we had the, I would say, the first one in the door, and we've had multiple ones in the door, asking about daycare. And when we started digging into that, we realized that there's tremendous demand right now within the community for daycare. There's 19 licensed daycare providers. Right now, there is one at St. Teresa's that is, that has any capacity. Everyone else is on a waiting list. And even at the planning commission, Mr. Bob Thrower, you know, testified that his wife operates the one out at the bowling alley. And he testified to the fact that it's difficult to get, not only get these, but then expand them. They were trying to expand in order to allow more kids. And for some reason, the state didn't find their way to approve that. So I hope that they, you know, continue down that path and find success because at the end of the day, it's needed. So we have an operator. Right now, we're currently in discussions with an operator who is currently operating in a smaller location. They're looking to expand, looking to provide capacity into the community. And that's really what drove this conversation. And so in terms of its compatibility and its impacts, you know, I think there was supervisor about you, you know, kind of related the fact that there are multiple daycare facilities in residential areas. The one that comes to mind, just because it's two blocks from my office, is Kindercare right there, you know, on Curry. And their capacity is 48, 48 kids. Their residential adjacency on both sides, and I would submit to you, a parking situation that's not nearly as advantageous as what we're proposing. So those things being contemplated and the fact that we met with, you know, I would say, certainly our most vocal opponent has been the Throwers, our neighbor to the back, which we've had a relationship with in the past. And we sat down with them on multiple occasions, talked about, you know, their pain points. And it became very clear when I first met with them, you know, what are your concerns? And they said, hey, we've spent a lot of, we put a lot of energy and effort into our backyard. We want to enjoy our backyard. The idea of having 36 kids on the other side of the fence, you know, is not appealing. I get that. I understand that. So that's really where we came up with the idea of limiting the days of operation because we were looking for Saturday operation. We went back to our operator, pulled it back to weekdays, Monday through Friday. And then we further restricted the hours of outdoor use from 8:00 to 5:30. And that was based on the recommendation from the Throwers that they get off work, they come home, they want to sit in the backyard and do their thing, right? So we feel like we've really negotiated in good faith to try and mitigate the impacts of that. And the only, and there was conversation about the limit on the number and whether or not, you know, I was agreeable to that with the planning commission. And I would say this, my objection to the limitation on the number is that that number is established through the State Department of Health and Human Services. And there wasn't any rationale provided for why we would go from 36 to 20. If the state comes in and they measure the square footage of the building and they measure the square footage of the yard and say, based on those measurements, you can have 36 kids, well, then there was no rationale provided for why we should decrease it to 20. And so I just thought, in terms of trying to define lines of jurisdiction, I thought it made sense for maybe the planning commission in the city to maybe stay out of that realm and let the state do their job. And so if, you know, if the zoning is appropriate, if we've addressed some of the issues on the variance side, if we've done what we can to mitigate the impacts on the neighbors, which we feel we have, then let it stand on its own and let the state do their job. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Cool.
Aaron, this has to do with cost. I think at previous meeting, you mentioned $60,000 cost to convert it to a residence. But I did notice in our packet that the fire department may require you to put in fire sprinklers. What's that cost?
Yeah, we actually, in discussions with the fire department, we came to alternative mitigation measure, which would just require taking two existing windows that are already framed in and converting those to doors.
Okay.
So that cost would be pretty minimal. And once we have, once we have the egress from the rooms, then we no longer have to do fire sprinklers.
Okay. So that's minimal cost. And all right, I understand that then in terms of weighing. All right.
Aaron, I understand your point about the state, but as some of my colleagues know already, I think the state probably is no better at figuring these things out than the federal government or the local government. So I'm not sure that their equation regarding the number per square foot and per square foot of the property itself is any more sacred than some number we would come up with. Have you had a chance to talk to your primary person who would operate this daycare center and talk about somewhere between 20 and 36?
For the record, Aaron West, we did approach that conversation. Unfortunately, that, because you're literally talking about almost reducing it in half, that number in half, it becomes, you know, really not viable from an economic perspective. So and again, I would just, I would defer to the fact that you have 19 other operating daycares in, within the city limits that were permitted by the state and, you know, provided the allocations that they were provided. And I went through with planning and code enforcement and through public works and traffic, and there's no documented complaints against any of the existing daycares based on noise, based on traffic, any of that.
Perhaps I didn't make my question clear. You said it would cut it nearly in half. I said, is there any number between 20 and 36 that your potential renter would agree to?
I apologize. I didn't, and for the record, Aaron West, I did not contemplate a negotiation based on that just because I couldn't grasp a rationale. So thank you.
So Aaron, one of our jobs is to determine whether or not planning aired. So if I can bring you to that, because that's really what we need on the record, is to determine that. So when I look at the parking and the condition for parking, I don't know if you can put that back up, Hope, but it talks about, is it so special, unique, you know, is the property there? So why didn't the planning commission determine that this property is unique, odd, and that the on-street parking? Because I am going to say, I think the particular property is odd, unique, a one-off in the city, whatever. So where's the air or where was their rationale? And that doesn't mean I'm agreeing to childcare. I'm just talking about the parking itself in your discussion point.
Exactly.
Why couldn't you use the on-street parking for the barber shop, the yarn store, the all those other things on the list?
Thank you for the question. For the record, Aaron West. And honestly, the easiest response, and I think Hope will agree with me on this, is that honestly, it wasn't contemplated. It was, there was, really, there was confusion at the point that the vote came back at a 2-2 where the chair actually thought that it passed and started to move on to the next item. And somebody goes, wait, 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 what was it? And they went back and went, well, it was 2-2. And so then they deferred to staff on, okay, so what does that mean? Well, actually, that means that that, the vote fails, right? And so then, literally, the comment was, well, then I guess we don't have to consider the variance. And at that point, I objected and asked them to make a decision on the variance so that I could appeal both of them to this body. So there really was no conversation at all about the parking, about the uniqueness of the situation. It was just because the SUP died, kill the variance and call it good.
Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager, I have a slightly different take. The planning commission, like you all are doing today, took three items together. They held a public hearing on three items. They discussed three items. So I think included in that discussion was the discussion of the parking. Granted, the focus was use and the special use permit because that was really, when they conducted their public hearing, the focus was both use and compatibility of use as well as concerns about parking in the area. I suspect when you conduct your public hearing, you'll hear similar comments. So the end of what Aaron said, I'll agree. It was a 2-2 vote after having not gotten a second of a motion to deny. So motion to approve failed. And they said, oh, okay, well, I guess we don't have to handle the variance. We said, no, no, no. For the record, you do need to handle the variance. So that vote did go very quickly and didn't have a lot of deliberation at that very point in time. But in fairness to the commission, they did hear a lot of public testimony on parking in the area and the on-street parking, and it was embedded in their overall discussion.
Yeah, Hope, can you, and I know this has happened before, so it's not as unusual it might sound for my question, but can you enlighten me as to why all of staff seemed to think the parking was adequate and all of the planning commission voted against the variance?
I'm going to give you an answer I gave Commissioner about probably a year ago. And I told her, I say this all the time, and you're going to hear me say it. Okay, the staff goes first. So the staff gets an application on our desk. We visit the site. We cast as wide a net as we can. We think of all the impacts. We look at, we observe the conditions in the field. We work with our colleagues and we write a report. We don't get the benefit of public comment. The planning commission then, they take into consideration our report, but they get the benefit of public comment. And you all get the benefit of what the planning commission's public comment is and then your public comment. And so what I like to say is, hopefully, staff gets it right at the beginning and hopefully we contemplated all of the impacts. But I don't live there. I can't explain to you the daily occurrences there. I can only explain to you my observations from visiting the site, from dealing with similar uses and the same for my colleagues. So staff gives you the best recommendation based on our professional understanding and expertise. But in our defense, we don't, we don't hear from the neighbors because our report's pretty much done by the time we notice a meeting. So I think that could help explain some of the divergence is because the planning commission has a bigger data set.
Good answer.
Okay. Thanks, Aaron. All right. Public, we're all public here, but who wants to go first? This is a public, this is a public hearing. Don't be intimidated, okay? We all put our pants on one leg at a time. Go ahead. Who wants to start?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, the board, mayor. My name is Michael Basher, for the record. I am a resident and own the property with my wife at 821 Tonka Lane, which is directly behind the subject property. We share the longest fence line, which is directly to the property's north. It's approximately 84 feet and approximately 30 feet from our back door to his fence line. We've lived in this property for seven years now. We got this property with nothing in the backyard. It was dirt. And we've spent the last seven years making it a home. We love our home. We want to stay there until we're old and gray. I retire in five years and I plan on doing a lot of gardening. I have a vineyard back there. Eventually, I'd like to get a spa and a pergola and all the good things that every resident wants for their home. Specifically, and this is a lot for us, this is a lot for me, to take in all the variances and the resolution of intent and the PUD to understand all that. So with that being said, I know A through D are the motions that are put forward to you. And me and my wife, everything was fine. We've talked to Aaron, we've talked to Hope. Everybody's helped us out a lot to understand what this is all about. And it specifically comes down to us for the childcare. They're asking of upwards of 36 children to be 30 feet from my door. I have neighbors with children. One of them is sitting here with me. And, you know, we love the kids in the neighborhood coming around to play, but 36 children right out my back door seems quite excessive. I understand that there are properties on the west side and throughout Carson City that do have large childcare facilities in their neighborhoods, but those neighborhoods are much larger than ours. Our, most of these properties are approximately 6,000 square feet. And 6,000 square feet, you can't get, you know, 20-foot setbacks like you're supposed to have. You know, the setback that's only five feet on his west side is five feet from a 12-foot center block wall. You know, I mean, these are, these are small, little lots here. And I just don't feel comfortable, nobody in our neighborhood, we've received letters, nobody is comfortable with the childcare. And I agree, you know, the neighborhood businesses that are on the list, Aaron even proposed to you, Pilates, yoga, hey, you can have a dojo in there, you know, MMA fighting dojo, that's fine. It's 36 children and their parents dropping them off is the concern for the parking and the traffic and the noise. And me and my wife ask you, please, to take us into consideration. We moved into this property knowing what was there and we're hoping that it doesn't change. Thank you for your time.
Is there any questions?
Yeah. Hang on. Yeah, Mike, hang on a second.
Question I have, yoga, Pilates, something like that, is that an amenable use that is something that you'd be comfortable with?
Again, for the record, Michael Basher, yes. I think our largest concern was the childcare and the amount of traffic that it entails and the volume of noise that will be followed with it. I just can't see, most of those neighborhood businesses, I've seen the list, and Aaron shared it with me and his wife, and he, and we did, we met a couple of times after work and sat down with Aaron, and he really helped understand, you know, tried to explain, and like I said, so did Hope. And I think it's okay, you know, it's a neighborhood business, but it is a neighborhood. It's a small neighborhood.
So, can I talk about the parking with you then? So, if, can you put the parking slide back up? Because again, I want to clarify where we're going maybe as a team and a group here today to meet both the needs of the Builders Association and yours. So, when I look at that, I just want to make sure, there isn't any issue with four cars being parked there. So, if one of the other neighborhood businesses like Pilates, there's not an issue with four cars being parked on that road. You don't want 36 cars doing drop-offs, but four cars is fine if that's the number of employees in the office environment or the small neighborhood yarn store or whatever it might become. So, the four cars isn't the problem. It was the 36 coming in the morning and dropping them off and coming back at night and picking them up. Okay, I just want, thank you.
Linda Basher, for the record, I've met with several of the neighbors, and again, as my husband stated, we've worked with Aaron as much as possible and with Hope. And I have met with some of the neighbors that live in the condos, and I know that they have, yes, and they have submitted letters to you as well. And they do park on the street in the evening just because of the spillover of them living in there. So, not to the point of where they're taking up that entire street, by no means. So, you know, you know, not to be on both sides of the fence, but really to, you know, I want Aaron to, and their business to be successful. They own that property. I would never go in and tell my neighbor east side to, hey, you have to put a kitchen, you know, in his property or what have you. I wouldn't do that to you. You know, they own it. But, you know, to have, like you said, 36 vehicles there, that's a lot. You know, that street, Randall, dead ends into our neighborhood, you know, and then goes into our neighborhood. And they, people go down Little Lane, and to avoid that light, they pass through our neighborhood. And it's been going on prior to me living there. And so, to allow for a yarn or Pilates or anything on that list besides something that's going to generate tons of noise or potentially crawling up my fence to get into my backyard, yes, I, you know, we're not unopposed to that. And we will definitely always work with Aaron on whatever is going to generate money for our city, most definitely. So.
Okay, Linda. Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Hi, for the record, Isai Marichami. I'm the neighbor to them north of the property in question. I have a three-year-old daughter, and we always hang out in the backyard during big days, in the evenings, and in the weekends. And I can tell you, 20 kids need not be outside to make noise. They can still be inside and make so much noise to bother the neighbors. I can tell-
My kids never made any noise.
That's an exception, not a standard.
Mr. Mayor, don't prove you're a politician.
So, that's the biggest concern of ours. Even 20 kids inside the house, not even getting outside the house, can make enough noise that can reach our house and beyond that. And that is our main concern, and we lose our enjoyment of our backyard as well as our home. And in addition, I have the same concerns about the parking. On Randall, we always see some kind of truck and trailer parking because of the condo lawn maintenance company. So, it's not always empty. It's been used. If you drive over there, now you will see the lawn maintenance company for the condos parked a truck with a trailer. So, it's not always empty. Most of the daytimes, it has parking in it. And we always have noise from the USPS facility. 5:00 every day, we are opened up by the big rigs that come into the USPS facility. We put up with that. Now, we are going to, now we are going to put up with all the noise all day long, and that is the biggest concern we have.
All right. Got it. Okay. Yes, sir. Mike, go ahead.
Again, for the record, Michael Basher, I'm the neighbor. I'm a little confused with the variance for the parking. I understand everything's in its own part. That 150-foot section for employee parking, will that strictly be his employee parking? Nobody else will be able to utilize that?
No.
Okay, thank you. All of a sudden, I want to know, they can. Thank you very much.
All right. Other public comment? Anybody else? Any other? Pardon me? There you go.
Good afternoon. My name is Cheryl Lacome.
Say your first name again, please.
Cheryl Lacome.
Cheryl.
I'm a lifelong Carson City resident, a public employee, and as mother of a young child. I am here today in support of the proposed amendments to the zoning to the Randall Drive property. As a mother working full-time, I had to make difficult decisions while on maternity leave regarding where my child would go during the day when I returned to work. I toured several childcare facilities in Carson City and was placed on three waiting lists. After the birth of my child and eight weeks of maternity leave, I had to resort to other options and ultimately place my child in an unlicensed home daycare. Although there are many options for childcare in Carson City, I believe there is a shortage of available facilities, especially for children under two. We were ultimately on a waiting list for more than six months before we were able to get a spot at a licensed childcare facility. I'm here to encourage you to support working families in Carson City and approve the amendments necessary to change the zoning and ultimately allow for a new daycare center in Carson City. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Cheryl. Cheryl, where's your house?
I live in North Carson. So, I do not live in this neighborhood.
Okay, I got you.
I'm here mainly because I, there is a definite childcare shortage in Carson City. And I understand I only have one child, so I understand if you have 20, obviously, that could emphasize that. But in speaking as a mom and at a daycare, I would say my average drop-off time and pickup time is less than five minutes. So, it's not something where I'm going there and I'm parking and I'm there for an extended period of time. I can, you know, as far as parking goes, I can imagine, you know, if it's a, we'll say yoga, for example, usually, there's up to 20 people in a yoga class there for an hour. I could see maybe more potential for parking issues if you had 20 vehicles parked for an hour straight versus kind of people coming and going and dropping off in shorter increments.
Okay. And it doesn't matter where you live. This is a public hearing, so don't, I just, for the record, just want to make sure, we've got all the information on here, so don't worry about that at all. All right, who's next?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Teresa Gattenbein. I am the applicant for this childcare. I have been doing this for two years out of my home. At this time, I'm only allowed to have four children because I am not licensed. I have a list of parents that need childcare. Like Cheryl said, it's very hard for them to find a good childcare for children under two, three, and four years old. They, I have several parents that I watch now. I have several that are full-time, and I have several that are part-time. What that means is that I have a couple of parents that I watch for two to three days a week because they're nurses. My husband, David, here, is a nurse, so I understand those long hours. So, that's where we get the hours, from 6:00 to 8:00, not that those children are outside at those times. I just want to express that. I don't, trust me, I'm not a morning person. I don't like playing outside at 7:00 in the morning. Not my thing. Nor do I, the kids do not. They come in and they eat breakfast and they play inside. I would like to extend my business because I have such a request right now, just, I haven't even advertised. The parents that I do have have extended to their friends and their family, that they love coming to my home with their children. They have entrusted me with their little ones every day, and their children love coming to my home. They play inside, they play outside, and I wish I had filmed it today. My kids were screaming inside, and I tell them, like, all right, we're going outside? They didn't scream once. Not that it doesn't happen, I'm just saying. You know, they think that 36 kids, that's a lot of noise. If you knew this house that Aaron has, this building, house, whatever you guys want to call it, there are four different offices. And by childcare licensing came in and said, okay, this is the size of each room, this is the amount of children you can have in each room, different ages in each room. So, it's not all 36 children would be outside in the yard making the noise from 6:00 in the morning until 5:30, 7:00 o'clock at night. That's what I want to express a lot of, too, is that it's not, you're thinking a lot of noise. They're not elementary kids, they're not high school kids out there screaming. They're little babies, they're children, infants. Yes, they make noise, I get that. When I have a child screaming, we deal with it. A lot of the times, we just take them back inside to see what's going on. There's not that much noise. I've been in this for two years, and it's not an elementary school. We don't have, you know, 10 classes outside playing recess all at once, running around with their heads cut off. They're not that bad, really. Cheryl is one of my parents, and her son, I've had him since he was three months old, loves coming here. There's lots of, they make friends. It's good to socialize. A lot of kids do a lot better that way. And I have found with, meeting with Aaron and my realtor at AEI, this building would be perfect because of the different rooms that he has in this building. The backyard is perfect. On the one side of the house is nothing but what they tell us has to be, a sand area. It has one neighbor on that side, you know, there, that's where they're going to be primarily. There's a little grass area, but they tend to play on the equipment more than just in the grass. As far as children climbing on the fence, they're not taller than this table. They cannot take down that fence. They cannot climb it. They're not on the fence. I have a home now, they're not on the fence. I can guarantee you, they're not going to tear down my neighbor's fences. As far as the parking, like Cheryl said, you know, there, there are five minutes in the morning, five minutes in the evening. They come at different times. I have one mom that comes in at 6:30, and I have another mom that comes in at 8:00. I don't have 36 cars out front all at once. Never do I even have, right now, I do not have three cars out there at once. You know, and it's public parking because of the side streets, whatever. They were saying the variance of the one wall is next to the post office. There's no house over there, so I don't know what that means as far as five feet. There's a parking lot there, nobody over there to complain about them being on the wall or whatever it is. I just would really, really want you guys to approve this because I really want to put four or five moms to work. I really want to help out these working parents that have a very hard time finding a good daycare. I want mine to be one of the best daycares in this town, and I want to improve that for my parents. So, I really want you guys to give me a chance to prove myself.
I know, we'll hear from your husband in a second. Did either of you speak before the Planning Commission was up?
No, I was here. I didn't realize we can come up here and-
Okay, so-
I don't understand all of this jardiance and what we can and can't do.
And this one, this one's pretty easy to understand. I mean, you know, there's nothing unusual about it, so I'm kidding you there.
Yeah. Well, and like you had said earlier, that, you know, there are other daycares in town, and I have driven around also, that, you know, how do you approve one daycare in a housing area that has no parking compared to what Aaron has on his where there's a whole side street and nobody, they're not parking in front of anybody's house, they're not blocking anybody's driveway, you know? And I ask, as a business owner, I ask my parents to respect my neighbors. You know, don't park in front of their house. Don't use their driveways as turnarounds. You know, it's just common sense. Turn around how you have to, go around the block. I've driven in that neighborhood, and where the neighbors are behind us, you have to drive down Randall Drive and go to the left and then go to the left again, and they're in a circle. My people are not going to drive by their house every single day. They have to go through another neighborhood to go by their house. So, I don't understand where the traffic for them comes in. There's two exits in that whole neighborhood that I've seen that I could get in and out of there. And I fully understand their, you know, I respect their wishes and stuff, too, but I would love to have this business as it is desperately needed in our town.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Want to add anything?
Yeah, Dave Gattenbein, for the record.
Dave, just one second. I'm surprised Barrett's got his light on and I stepped on his light again, so go ahead, Dave.
You say you have, did I hear you correctly, four now? Four children in your home?
Yes, sir. By law, I do not have to have a license with just four children.
Right, okay. So, but you're going to get that license if you do this?
Yes, I have to, yeah.
You heard my question of Aaron earlier about the number involved. Do you feel that 36 is your bottom line or 30? I know the 20 is probably not.
The reason we did not discuss that is because, like he said, going down from 36 to 20, that cuts my income in half.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about the 20. I'm talking about in-between.
Right.
Any number in-between that you might be able to live with, or are you just not, it's 36?
I would like to have what the state would allow me to have, and like he said, the child licensing came in and measured every room, including the outside usage, and said, you know, each room, he has four rooms, so I can have nine in one room and eight in the other. So, it's not overcrowded.
So, 36 is your-
I would like to have what they would tell me I could have.
Thank you.
Question, the way I understand it, you don't have them all at one time every, every single day? And two, what's the average age that you would be dealing with?
Right now, I deal with newborn to five or six years old.
And you're taking on more, not, you wouldn't be caring for 36 every day necessarily?
No, ma'am. It just depends on what they need.
What their schedule is.
I have full-time, I have part-times. Like I said, I watch nurses' kids, and they only work two, three days a week, sometimes four, if they pick up an extra shift, but they work the 12-hour shifts. And that's why I've asked for the extended hours, not that they'll be outside, but that I would be watching them. Plus, with the extra employees, you are only allowed so many children within whatever age it is that they, there's an allotment for the age to an adult. So, that's why I would say I would have four other employees.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, for the record, my name is David Gattenbein. Teresa and everyone else has pretty well covered everything that I was going to discuss. A couple of things I want to kind of bring to light, why residential areas work so well for daycares is because of the fact that you have to have 37 square feet outside per child. There's numerous buildings we looked at that would have been perfect. There's empty buildings all over Carson City, but unfortunately, not having any type of outside access or any place outside for the children to play is one of the main reasons why residential buildings or buildings that are similar to residential come to play so much and they're sought after so much in those, in those respects. Kind of the elephant in the room here is noise. Once again, as my wife stated, the average age of kids that she's watching are from newborn up to four to five years old, anything later than that, and they're in preschool or they're in school themselves. We've already said, you know, that's not a problem with limiting the outside hours to try to help and, you know, convey with the, with the neighbors and stuff. One thing I would ask everybody to take under consideration if this was converted back to a house, what about barking dogs? What about kids that are in the backyard that they don't have any supervision to? I mean, there's a lot of factors that this could come back to other than you have, you know, kids in the back that are, by law, have to be monitored all the time versus, you know, circumstances that could actually, you know, like any neighborhood, could create any type of problems. We're more than willing to work with everybody as much as we can with this, but there's also, you know, comes the bottom line, too. You know, we're trying to run a business here, we're trying to benefit working people and especially nurses. That's why we, you know, with me being a nurse, one of the biggest things that I found was there's no daycares that actually cover nurses' hours. We work 12-hour shifts. You know, everybody asks, you know, pick their kids up by 8:00, so we're just like, hey, this is a niche here, we can get 12-hour shifts. So, a lot of the, a lot of the stuff that we do is, you know, is for the nurses. The fence- nurses. The fence-wise, I know there was some comments in there about the fence, but one thing that Aaron has pointed out too, you know, as leasers of this property, we're responsible for any damage. Well, trust me, I don't want to be building any fence either, so I'll guarantee you, the kids won't be climbing or tearing down any fences. Because that's our responsibility and that comes out of our pocket. Noise-wise, once again, it's like anything, these, these are not, you know, adolescents are not teenagers or not anything like that. These are young kids. Noise becomes an issue, then, you know, everybody that's watching these children will, you know, will have to deal with that appropriately. I, I honestly feel that a lot of this is, is more not knowing or not understanding the reality of a daycare. There are several daycares in town, they're already in neighborhoods. And I think if they would have a chance to talk to some of the neighbors to those places, a lot of the residents in this area would probably realize that it's really not that bad. There could be a lot worse. It was mentioned that Pilates, twenty minutes, twenty vehicles parked for an hour in there. Any of the businesses that were up there is going to have just as much, if not probably more, traffic flow in and out of that town, you know, or in and out of that area that you're looking at for extended periods of time. So they could be tying up even more of the parking areas that are there. So in closing, I, you know, I would really appreciate it if we could get, at least get this resolved, because I know this has been going on for a while.
A little while.
Yeah.
A little while. We'll see what we can do. These are Solomon decisions, time meant, but, okay. Thank you very much. All right. Any other public comment on, anyone want to weigh in? Hope what would happen if you just lived by the letter of the resolution and rezoned this mobile home six thousand?
That wouldn't meet the letter of the resolution, because the letter of the resolution kicks, that kicks in at the time of sale. And there's not a sale. But certainly if...
Then the property just stays the way it is until there's a sale?
Correct. It would be vacant.
That's what the resolution says.
Correct. I think your words were an odd duck.
All right, I got you. I understand. Well, we're trying, I, I understand, I understand.
I don't think vacancy is good for a neighborhood either. I think they'll end up with some other issues.
For vacancy. I kind of like where I was going earlier, that we try to meet the letter and put residential office back in the permitted so he can convert it back to a house without a special use permit. So he can meet the letter, try to meet the letter of intent, but not have to pay extra money to buy, get a special use permit to meet the letter of intent.
Don't mean to be a wet blanket here, but can we have this discussion after I leave? And I'll come back.
Well, we'll be in recess for ten minutes. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
You know, sometimes we have these pressing personal problems that need to be addressed, so. All right, everybody, we'll call a meeting of the board supervisor back to order. Everybody had a chance to relax a little bit. Anybody, any other public comment? Anybody want to weigh in on anything they've heard? Anybody? Okay, all right. So let's bring it here to the board. We'll close the public hearing, or, we'll just bring it back here to the board. You know, this, I'll let you guys start off and then I'll tell you where. Okay? Somebody want to start?
Okay, I can start. All right. I, you know, I'm listening to what everyone has to say, but in conscience, I really feel that the childcare facility is not a bad use in not a bad area. And I feel that the problem, I don't see the problems as being there. I do feel that maybe we should have a condition put on that of three years, you know, make sure that all the conditions are being met, that are required, that have been, you know, put, put in place by the planning commission. But in terms of the use and considering what I see all over town, I, sometimes my feeling is be careful for what you wish. What if you get a bad neighbor with barking dogs and/or a greenhouse is allowed? You could have a grow operation since we didn't plan, you know, approve a dispensary as of yet, so just saying. So that is another issue. And so I'm, I'm concerned about that as well. And I feel like of all locations for a childcare facility, this better accommodates the parking, the pickup, the drop-off and all the rest. And the thought process about yoga and all other things, yes, the cars are parked there for an hour or forty-five minutes or whatever, and it's group classes. And so it's more cars at any given time, whereas, whereas childcare is not that scenario. So, you know, I, I, as much as I sympathize with everything that I've heard, I, I really don't think it's going to be a bad use of the property. That's my thought.
Okay. So, one, one of the issues that, for me also, is when I look at the conditions and the accommodations, and are they reasonable or not reasonable? Is it fair to the neighbors or not fair to the neighbors? And so I feel like the daycare applicant has come far by saying no Saturdays, no nighttime playing in the backyard to help the residents enjoy their home. I think the parking is sufficient, as sufficient for them as for any of the other businesses that are on the list. Let me say it that way. However, at the same time, I'm, I feel like the Builders Association also signed a letter of intent that made a commitment on what a property was going to be. So I'm completely torn into, you know, what, what do we really do here? I do think it's consistent as childcare and what I see in all the other neighborhoods. And so that also is a difficult choice to say, how come it's okay in nineteen neighborhoods next to a house, but it's not okay next to your house? So, but I also understand they don't want thirty-six kids in their backyard and they want to enjoy that. So I definitely want to deal with allowing the residential office component on the list because I want the Builders Association to be able, to be able to comply with the original letter of intent, which is to put it back to a house, which ultimately I think is the, the goal and the best answer if you make the sale. And I think that's kind of another problem with the letter of intent. It never discussed in the letter of intent what was going to happen if they didn't sell it. It addressed what we're going to do if we sell it, but it didn't address what are we going to do if it's just we move out. And so for that, we're kind of left up here is the board to go, uh-oh, there's a hole in the letter of intent. And we've all already discussed it wasn't a great tool. So we have to correct that. So, on the thirty-six kids versus twenty kids, I don't think that Carson City should get in the businesses of determining the childcare regulation. Our job is, does it meet the fire codes? Does it, so I, I tend to just want to actually stay out of that because I don't think we're subject matter experts, nor are our staff in those areas. And so, that's a discussion point too.
No, no, Siri, I tend to agree with, with, with that, that we should stay out of those things. I guess, you know, and Hope, maybe you helped me here, but in, in resident, childcare facilities are used, are subject to a special use permit in residential areas? Is that right or wrong?
I believe it's SUPM, double checking. And it's only as an accessory to a residential use. So you can't have a childcare facility as a primary use. You have to have the residents as a primary use. And the childcare facility is only the accessory use. And you're correct, it's in the residential zoning districts, it's a conditional use under that structure.
Yeah. I don't know, you know, John, I'd go in a second here.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I don't disagree at all with what Lori said or what any of the three of you are saying about, we don't need to be the arbiters. I was merely hoping that some middle ground could be found, which is why I suggested that, or I wanted to ask the questions that I asked Aaron and the prospective people running the childcare facility if one wound up in there. As far as the letter goes, I, I'm, it has no standing in my eyes. And as far as I'm concerned, it should never have been, but that doesn't matter, I wasn't here then. But nevertheless, it holds no water in my eyes. And so, it's put us though in this position and it's not a good position. My, my sense is that Karen is not incorrect. Karen, we're not going to be able to be Solomons on this one. And so I, I tend to agree with her. My problem becomes that the commission voted four-zip on the variance for parking, whereas our transportation people and our planning people said, oh, there's no problem there really. And I don't think there is a problem there. But when, when you have a unanimous, or almost unanimous in terms of those who voted and anyone who didn't vote took themselves out of the equation, when you have a unanimous denial of the variance, I, that's a high, that's a high hurdle for me to get over. So I'm probably just sitting here talking to myself to find out where I'm going to wind up.
All right. Well, maybe I'll talk to myself a little, wind up too there. But, you know, one, I think that the Builders Association's gone over, you know, it's a tough decision for them. I mean, and they have a new place and, you know, they've been there for a long time. And I firmly believe that they've been trying to do what they can to help make everybody happy in this. And, and I frankly think that the PUD approach and then limiting it to the things that can be in there, is not a bad, is not a bad way of going about it. I am concerned about the daycare center. And it's not that we don't have enough around, there's a shortage of it. But this is a residential area. And if we do, and there are daycare centers, daycare places in residential areas, but they are as an accessory use, which means that somebody's got to live in the house and then it can be permitted by a special use permit. So that's how they get there. But that can't happen here, because nobody can live in this house. There's no house. I mean, it's a house outside, but it, but it has no kitchen, no, no, no living amenities in it as per se. And, and, you know, when you look at, when I look at it from that perspective, I think, well, okay, what would, it shouldn't go down that lane. But I think that, you know, the... But I think that, you know, the residents, you know, given the history of this piece of property and the kind of the goofy letter of intent or resolution that we did in 2001, I'll call it goofy. You know, and I know they were trying to make things work then as well. But I think, you know, that we're trying to make things work. My own sense is that we ought to just stay with what the planning... I know the planning commission came out 2-2 on the daycare center. But I think that from a zoning standpoint, that makes more sense. I mean, to not have a daycare center in there. So that's my two cents. I just think that, you know, we are making a zoning decision in essence. And I get the fact that there are folks who have signed up who would like to run a daycare center there. I'm not certain in my own mind. That testimony goes to a special use permit, not to a zoning issue. And so, you know, I tend to go down the road that says, you know, from a Solomon standpoint, let's... My own sense is go do a PUD, limit the uses, and that would exclude a daycare center and go on about life. And that allows the Builders Association to either market it or sell it or put a business in there or whatever. But it wouldn't allow the daycare that they've already got lined up here. But I think that somewhere we have to also consider what the residents out there say. I mean, they're all trying to get along out there and they're coming a long ways to do it. And so that's my two cents from Solomon, so.
Okay. But allow the parking then for any of the other businesses? Because if we don't grant parking, then we actually aren't granting anything.
Oh, you grant the parking.
And allow the residential office correction in the list so they don't have to get a special use permit. So we'd have to correct the top title portion. Because unless I missed something in the testimony, nobody has the issue with it going back to a residence and no one believes they should have to come back to get a special use permit to make it a residence again. So we would correct the language in the title that was struck, but limit it to properly that section, but only the residential office primary, which is an art gallery. Just, I want to be clear on the record so nobody comes back later, right? A massage therapy museum office. Park, which I don't think anybody'd object to if they got rid of it. I'm not sure that... The single family home and a teahouse. Okay? I just, again, want to make sure that we're all knowing what we're talking about and there's no surprises. You're saying you'd be comfortable with giving them the parking variance so that at least whatever they're going to market for would have the variance for parking?
Right.
They can convert it back to residential without having to get a special use permit because the primary permitted use is an RO district would let them do it? And then you would keep childcare out?
Right.
Okay, I'll think about that.
Well, unfortunately, if I understand this correctly, and it is a little convoluted, so I may have to catch up. What you're talking about now is going against the planning commission's 4-0 vote on the variance on the parking. So in that instance, I'm not too sure I don't agree with Karen that other businesses are going to be more of a problem with parking than this business would be. I understand the neighbors' concern, but I also understand what Karen said. Be careful what you wish for because you might wind up with other problems. The neighbors directly to the back may still have a problem if there's a daycare in there with 36 kids, no matter whether they're six months old or six years old. But in terms of the neighborhood itself, overall neighborhood, I think if we're going to go against the planning commission's variance, I don't think it matters what we allow in there in that sense because parking's going to be a problem either way. So if you're going to ask me to vote against the planning commission on that and with the staff in essence, although Hope had a good explanation of why staff goes first and how that may turn out, then I'm thinking that the daycare center is no worse than any other business that goes in there.
I have a question, Hope. On the daycare center issue with what Bob said, you have to live in it in order for it to be an accessory use? So it's not an allowed use essentially?
In the residential zoning districts... Let me just get to that page real quick. You guys have too many rules for me to enforce. Okay. In the residential zoning districts, when we look at our conditional use list, what it states is a childcare facility accessory to a residential use. So in the residential zoning districts, you may have the childcare facility, but you have, it's an accessory use, which means you need a primary use and it specifies that primary use is a residential use. But you still need the special use permit for the childcare facility. And that language is parallel in the residential zoning districts.
Meaning that that house could sell as a residence, but it can be a childcare facility if you wanted it to be, correct?
Correct. The childcare facility would not be able to be a primary use. It would have to be accessory to the residential use. Then in our development standards, and I just remembered this, so I apologize, Mayor, because I didn't think of this when we were talking during break, there are supplemental standards associated with childcare facilities. And I believe those supplemental standards say that the operator of the childcare facility has to live in the house. I'm looking at right now, it's 1.6. I told you, you have a lot of rules for me. Yeah, it's 10 different rules. And let me just look real quick. In residential zoning districts, a childcare facility may only be established as an accessory use to the residential use of the structure. And the residence must be occupied by the operator as the primary residence.
So we can't do it. We just can't do it, is what you're telling us.
I think the question I was answering was...
Neighborhood business, not residential.
Well, it's in a residential zoning district, but it's zoned neighborhood business.
It's not in a residential zoning district. I think what the mayor's question to me was, was how our childcare facility is handled in residential zoning districts. So my answer to the mayor was answering that question, not answering a hypothetical about a house in a neighborhood business zoning district.
So in other words, it does go back to the letter of resolution, which of course...
Right.
Sort of. Aaron, clarify it up.
Sorry for interrupting, maybe for clarification for the record, Aaron West. I should have provided this in the history of how we got to this because in the resolution of intent, it did talk about the property going back to the MH zoning. We actually contemplated that originally with the idea of go there with the idea of still doing daycare. And the limitation was if we went to the MH zoning, then the operators would actually have to live on the property. And that's where, because the house is not oriented as a house, you know, the building is not oriented as a house. It doesn't have a kitchen, doesn't have full bathrooms, things of that nature. It just, it was kind of physically impossible. And so that took us down the path of neighborhood, leaving it neighborhood business, getting the special use permit for the daycare because then the operator doesn't have to occupy.
So let's walk through this scenario. Let's say you were forced to put it back to a single-family residential. Then you could apply for a special use permit as an accessory use and put the daycare in there?
If you lived in it.
So, no, but I think it's important for the residents there to understand something. I need to be clear in my mind. They could put it back to the house, which the letter of intent indicates. And then they could come in and apply to put the daycare in there as an accessory use? Because now someone could reside there. Wow, okay. I don't know if they recognized that. So it can be a daycare... It could still be a daycare if it went back to a house? Huh. Wow, darn it. This isn't helping me. This is making it a conundrum.
At some point in time though, somebody has to, I mean, build it for a house because Aaron said it's not, there's a house. It's not there. Anyway. Okay, another shot. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, he can too. I'm like, wow.
I understand what you're saying, Ms. Bagwell. But then you're not using the entire 2,400 square feet that the state's using to allow 36 kids there. They also have a garage that would have to be converted back to a garage. That loses 400 feet. A kitchen, the rooms where the people have to reside in. Not all that square footage would be allowed then to allow 36 kids there. I don't know the state laws, but we're talking now they're down to 12 kids, 20 kids, not 36. Isn't that correct?
But you were opposed to it even being 20 kids as a daycare? So even if they... I just want to be fair to everybody, right? You were still opposed to 20 children, which could happen if they converted to a house and lost, like you said. So you were still opposed?
Yes, I still don't want a childcare facility behind my house. No.
Right, okay.
And the neighbors don't either.
I got it. I just want to be clear, the unintended consequences. Because what happens is we think we've done something and another rule in the code comes in and bops us in the back of the head, right? And says, oh, guess what? We can still do it. And I don't want any surprises for you as the neighbors to think we did something and he can go do what he wants and come around the back door anyway and get the daycare. So part of the discussion point here is we can put special conditions in a PUD. So we get to do more to limit what can go on in the daycare. So like Karen said, sometimes you get an unintended consequence and it's better to get a known answer with 20 rules that we can then revoke if they don't comply. I'm just walking through some thoughts.
Walk, thinking out loud here. I'm a little gun shy about making economic decisions on behalf of somebody who wants to run a daycare center. You know, do you need five, 10, 15, 20? How do you make it economically work? I get it that we can make, you know, with a PUD, you can say that certain things are included and not. It's easier to do that. But if we're asking to put restrictions on, I mean, I don't think we have enough information to say. I don't even know if we're, from an open meeting law standpoint, if we're even allowed to go down that road. But I think we're working on a slippery slope where we make a decision on a zoning matter of relative general applicability and we're telling, well, this daycare center can only operate with this amount. I don't know, you know, we either, for me, it's either fishing or you either put it in, let them make the decision, or you don't.
I think the conditions that we're referring to are about hours of operation and things of that nature, no Saturdays. You know, it's all the conditions that the planning commission already laid out, with the exception of limiting kids because we can't do that. That's not our purview.
Okay, I got that. Alright, we'll have a general discussion. Come on up. Linda, come on.
Linda Basher, for the record. At the last meeting, we had Aaron West reluctantly succeeded to the writing being in the tea leaves. That's a quote from him of childcare being taken off. You know, we're going back and forth on this. And I understand this is a really difficult situation. I've heard this. This is very emotional for me. This is my home to the point of I don't want to sell my home to have to move. I understand, you know, the young lady that came up. I was a single mom my daughter's entire life. This has just been very emotional to, from May until now. I understand about child cares. In the last meeting, we were there, the planning commission approved new child cares for our community. To say that the neighbors looking at Bond to the right of that property basically doesn't exist, they're renters there. There's a property there. But that keeps being said. There is a fence line there with people that live there that it is affecting them too. They're not coming forward because they're renters. They're not getting the notices to come in here and speak. You know, Eastside that spoke today is part of that. You know, we do deal with the post office noise. Back to the parking, trucks sit outside there every day, big rigs, to go in there. To say that my home, what I heard, that you have to go in my neighborhood before my home is exposed to that, I hear all of that. And I understand this is a really difficult situation. And to say that a yoga, that yes, 30 people would be parked out there. I think the Bondi said it well, that yes, we have this couple out here that wants this business more than anything. And I know that's difficult. And now on that list, there's nobody that's come forward to say, yes, I want to do yoga or have a tea shop in there, that they have a viable business that has come to them and said, this is what we want to do. But at the last meeting, we were here with the planning commission, that was it. We were done. It was said that, okay, the writing's on the wall. The entire neighborhood has said that this is not going to work for us and that we have worked with Aaron exhaustively and let's put this to rest. And now today, we're back here saying that, please, let us do this again. And the work has continued on the backside of our fence to prep for a childcare. We see it. It's, I can see on the other side of my fence. Castellini has been there prepping it for the childcare. So he's ready to move forward with that and we want to just be done with this. I understand that whether it's 20 cars outside there or like me, and my daughter's 28 now and potentially going to give me grandkids, that there could be 20 or 36 people coming to drop off their kids. I'm just saying that it's a small neighborhood. And it's just, I get it. I know that behind Adele's, there's that childcare that's there. There's a few homes in there mixed in with businesses. We don't have any other businesses. The condos that are there, that HOA was able to buy that strip of land and keep from putting a strip mall there. We're getting ready to have additional condos put on Little Lane. And we just want to keep our neighborhood. Bond is five parcels in, we have the post office. We have substantial noise from the post office, but we knew that when we bought that property. All of us did. And, you know, the time that this meeting takes place, our neighbors all can't be here to tell you the same thing that my husband, myself, and the letters that you've all received. And I feel for them. I understand you want to do that childcare. I don't want people to not be successful. But we're just asking you to please follow what the planning commission has said. And there really isn't a good way for parking for any of those because it just, it's a wider street that then goes narrow and goes into our neighborhood. And the Bondis, if you look at their letter, will tell you our cluster box is right there for where we get our mail. And it's just a difficult, it's a difficult situation. And I understand why we're spending so much time when you guys have other agenda items that you should probably be moving on and getting to. And, you know, Aaron has pleaded his case and they have a piece of property they own. But I just, I don't know. I don't know what we do here. It's just really, really difficult. And I thank you guys, I really do. I understand, I really do. Thank you.
Aaron, is the variance, the parking variance required for the daycare? Or for, do you want that just for the daycare or you want that if it went business?
Actually, it would be required for any of the businesses that are proposed in the PUD. For the record, Aaron West.
So if you had the businesses up here that are in the PUD, you'd want the variance? Okay, I got you. Alright, thank you.
For me, that... So our job is to determine whether or not the planning commission made an error. So they made an error, it's just for us to decide which one, right? Because if you gave them the zoning, you have to give them the parking. So which error did they make? And I don't know how much more blunt to be. You can't do one without the other. So I think I'm okay with what I was talking about before. Fix the residential office so they can do the single-family home. Give them the parking. And determine that a childcare is not the right answer there.
You know, and I...
It's not a win for anybody.
Not a win for anybody.
Maybe that's our good standard these days anymore is that we do a little bit for everybody and there's just not a win all the way around. for everybody and there's just not a win all the way around. But it still goes back a little bit to the letter of intent to say, keep it in office, give them the parking, or go back to a house. And it, it's really Bonds, or not Bond anymore, but they took that risk when they did and signed the letter of intent too. So part of me has that, right? You knew that. And I'm going to say on another piece, when they decided to move out of the building and go to their new location, they knew they had a letter of intent that gave them instructions on what to do with the property, right? So they also took that risk when they decided to move out and go into a wonderful building and location. So I think their board must have known this was going to be an issue.
Just for the record, we didn't know the resolution of intent existed.
Oh, you didn't?
He wasn't there.
You weren't, you weren't there.
Oh, you didn't know there was, you didn't know that?
It was done 17 years ago, nobody-
Okay. Oh, you didn't know there was a deed restriction or a filed letter of intent?
For the record, Aaron West. We, nobody on the board was aware of it. It was Lee actually brought it to our attention after we had already submitted our, we were already down the path.
That's the danger, that's the danger of having these one-off resolutions.
Yes.
Hang on, Aaron. John, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I do have a question because what Lori seems to be saying, correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, you're, you're appealing the denial that the planning commission gave. So that's one that's before us. The other that's before us is their denial of the variance. What Lori is saying basically is they were wrong on both counts.
Or one count.
No, you're, well-
No, I, I said one count. If you're going to give them the businesses that are on the list, you have to give them parking.
But the planning, but the planning commission wasn't going to give them the businesses.
No, 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 they didn't give them childcare. They gave them all the other businesses, but no parking.
But the first time around.
Right.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, let me just, let me just say this before you get, jump in, and you're welcome to jump in. This, this is one of those situations, and I hate to even say it like this, but I will. This is where, I mean, we can hang our hats on the technical appeal issues and things like that, or we can just try and solve the problem here because it's pretty clear that, you know, it's been up and down and around and, and you know, I'm first to say, you know, follow the law and, you know, hold it a strict, strict.
We've heard you say-
You've heard, you've heard me say that, follow the strict. But I think this is one of those situations where we just have to make a decision because these folks need to know on both sides of this thing. They need to know where it is. So I wouldn't be too concerned about whether it's upholding it or not. I mean, how do they expect to uphold a two-two vote?
You can't. That's what I said.
What does that mean? I mean, you know, so it happens.
Fifty percent.
And you really can't say what would happen if the vote, if, you know, anyway. Go ahead, I'm sorry, jumped in the middle of your stuff there.
If I can just, two quick clarifications. One, just a reminder, the commission, the commission looked at the PUD many, a few months after the SUP. So they weren't contemplating a variety of uses at the time of the SUP. They were, they were contemplating that, they were recommending removal of the resolution of intent for reasons that seem very obvious now, but they were not contemplating the list of uses with the PUD. Second point of clarification, I just want to ask Commissioner Bagwell if, because I want to try to understand what you just said on the planned unit development. That's the only piece I'm talking about right now. I think what I heard you say is you support the action of the planning commission with the addition of the following uses, and I'll read them into the record, and what they are, the permitted uses in the RO zoning district, an art gallery, a massage therapy, museum, office, park, single family, two-family dwelling, teahouse, with clarification that single family, two-dwelling are to be treated as allowed uses as they are in the RO zoning district, and that you would be supportive of adding the use health and fitness as the applicant has requested.
Correct.
Correct. So there would be no childcare.
Understood. Thank you.
No, we, well, we don't get to be that way.
Try a motion, let's see if we can-
My problem here is though that what is before us is to overturn the planning commission completely. It is.
No, not.
If I may, Mr. Mayor? In terms of the planned unit development, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the board. The planning commission has not taken an action. In terms of the zoning map amendment, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the board. The planning commission has not taken an action. In terms of the special use permit, the planning commission did not have a majority vote on, on the motion. Therefore-
So it failed.
The motion, the, the request was not approved. And in terms of the variance, the planning commission recommended denial. My question to Commissioner Bagwell was very specific to the PUD, which that, that's a, they're acting in a recommending capacity.
But there are four items before us and we have to vote on all four.
Well, the only thing, you know, if you went down, I think supervisor Bagwell, unless you would hear an exact motion, but the only thing that should be overturning the planning commission on would be the, the variance, the on-street parking variance. And which they, they denied, we would be approving that. So we'd be, we would be overturning that part of it. The other part would, would essentially be upholding that.
The SUP would go away, but we would also meet the other piece, which is to give you the ability to do the residential without a special use permit. Right, you, it would be a permitted use that way.
Thank you. Let's try, give them, make an emotion, let's see where it goes.
Mayor, can we have separate motions? I'm sorry, but yeah, they're, they're agendas that way, so you're going to have to do separate-
Sure.
Okay, so the first one's the planned unit development.
So take the easiest one first.
Do the PUD, yeah, we'll do it.
Okay.
I move to approve a request from the Nevada Builders Alliance for a planned unit development so as to limit the land uses to the, uses listed in the staff report and an amendment to the title portion that will allow the permitted uses under residential office as that's, so you're going to correct the title.
I'm wondering if it's a cleaner record if we just call out the uses?
That I read them back out?
And, and I think you-
I have them. So that we permit the residential office uses under the primary permitted uses, which is art gallery, massage therapy, museum, office, park, single family, two-family dwelling, teahouse, and the, is it an accessory permitted use for the health, fitness?
No. The health, fitness is allowed in neighborhood business, it appears in your report with a strike through, so we would not strike through it.
We'll unstrike it. We'll un, un, yeah, not strike through. Unstrike, which is a good word. We will not strike through the health use and not be allowed, and then the building must stay a single story and to limit the signage not to exceed two feet by three feet on property located at 806 Randall Drive, APN 009-072-01. Do I have to say, based on the findings contained in the staff report and discussion on the record today.
Did you call out disallowing the childcare facility?
It's that, does disallow in the child, with the exception of the childcare facility. Right.
Do you understand that motion?
Yes, so the motion was essentially as written in the staff report with the exception of the reference to the single family residential and substituting, removing that language, adding language that the primary, list of primary uses will include art gallery, massage therapy, museum, office, park, single family, two-family dwelling, teahouse, and the reference to health and fitness will not appear with a strike through.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll second that motion. How do I do that?
Hit the little second button.
Wait a minute here.
Are you on the right item?
Motion. Did you push the motion button?
I did.
Where am I? What does it say here? Didn't-
Are you on 19A?
Mr. Mayor, I hope Lori is the mover.
He's going to be the second. Just a second.
Can you do it for me?
Yes.
All right. All right, there's a motion and there's a second motion, on the motion discussion. We have a lot of discussion. All right, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay?
No.
All right, motion dies. All right, try another motion. I'm, I'm out of emotion, so we'll just let it sit.
You're out of emotion.
I'm out of emotion.
That's good.
You know what, we'll just let it go.
Well, it'll die. No matter what, so does hers. Oh, sorry.
So it dies, all right.
One of us has to move.
Well-
We can't leave everything dead.
Well, we'll take it, take it up. Let's, 19B, this is to introduce on, on ordinance to amend the zoning map by rescinding resolution of intent. Anybody want to follow, make a motion to remove the intent, the resolution of intent?
On discussion?
Discussion.
Then why don't we just leave the resolution of intent? What am I, what-
Because it really holds no water.
Well, but if we're not going to do anything under the first action, we still leave the, everyone with no answer. We, we have to do something here, you guys.
I mean, don't mean to sound like I don't care.
Right.
But that resolution of intent was wrong in the first place, it's wrong now, it ought to be rescinded and then deal with the consequences after that. That's the first thing we should have done.
If we just do a rescind, they get full neighborhood business, is that correct? They get everything, gaming, everything.
That's right, that's right. Deal with the consequences. But that, that resolution doesn't hold any water with me.
I won't go that far. I just, that is be careful for what you wish. I just don't want to disallow the childcare. That's, that's the plain, simple fact of it. You know, I don't mind any of the rest of the motion, but I feel that the childcare option should be out there. I am with conditions on it that, you know, they meet all the conditions that the planning commission has set forward with the exception of limiting the number of kids.
Yeah, and the variance, which plays into this, let's be honest about it. The variance is ridiculous if you let any other business, or not any other, but various other businesses in there, but not childcare. I'm just trying to be internally consistent.
All right, well, internal-
How about just on discussion then? How about with adding a condition then that it's only for three years and we make sure that the childcare did not impact so that if the residents are right, right? Let's say the residents are right about this and, and we're wrong. So they would be able, I'm just playing through my mind here. So what happens on the conditionals, because now they have all these conditions that say you can't play in the yard after 5:30. And they start playing in the yard and violating the conditions, right? So the Bashers or the neighbor to the right or whatever would be able to call community development and say they're violating the order. You would be able to have those put together for us and then we could say a reason to not renew the special use permit is because they're not living up to the deal. Is that a-
Well, they wouldn't have a special use permit, they'd be a permitted use.
No, 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 no. We're, we're doing a special use permit for childcare here. So I could limit it to three years like we did the Montessori school.
Right. But at the SUP, not as a-
Right, at the SUP.
Yes.
Right, on the SUP, we can limit it, correct, to three years?
That's correct. And if they were to violate the terms of the SUP, the revocation or an amendment to the conditions could be considered by the planning commission. It's not subject to your review. The commission has the authority to revoke.
Could I ask a question? Because this goes to, back to the original thinking that I have. It seems to me, and I'd like it if you as a planner could educate me if I'm wrong, it seems to me this is almost that resolution. The perfect example of what I call spot zoning, am I wrong?
Yes.
It's actually, the planning term is contract zoning, but it's similar, it's, it's essentially, it's similar.
Well, this is the reason I have taken a position that I have. As far as I'm concerned, this is a situation and Aaron didn't, he's acknowledged that, he didn't know it existed and his board didn't know it existed. But this is a situation where somebody did something 16 years ago that was basically spot zoning and we're living with the consequences. And the neighbors are living with the consequences. And we do need to rectify it, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Mayor, and I do care, but I don't know how we get from here to there. It's, it's a real problem.
Where do you want to get to, John? I mean, at the end of the day, I, you know, personally, you know, I'm kind of, not kind of, I am opposed to setting a three-year limit on these things because I think that, you know, if we're going to go down these roads, we might as well do it with our eyes open, this is what it is, go on about life, rather than putting a time limit on things and then, then saying, well, it worked out or it didn't work out. I mean, if it's the right thing to do, it's the right thing to do, time or no time. So John, if you want to try a motion, we can go back, we're on 19A, we can try another motion, if you want to try it.
Well, I'm not going to try a motion. I do have still some questions that I'm a little fuzzy on regarding. If nobody's living in this house and there's a childcare in there, I know it's zoned business, but we've just established it's zoned business on what I call spot zoning basis. So I mean, we're, whichever we return, we're violating our own tenets, aren't we?
If I can just remind the, the board how we got to where we are today. We brought before you a resolution of intent, zoning map amendment to rescind a resolution of intent. I think it's a fair description to say this entire board felt the way you're describing about the resolution of intent. Nobody was comfortable with the instrument. Having said that, no one was comfortable with removing the instrument and opening the door wide open to neighborhood business. What you, you said and the applicant agreed is let's get a limit on these uses. We don't feel like all these uses work in this particular, I'm going to use the mayor's word, odd duck site. And we get that there's lots of history that got us to where we are today, but we are where we are, right? We can't make that go away. So we have to try to go forward with the best decision we can possibly make. And you have the master plan to help you, you have, you have lots of documents to help guide you in making that decision, as did the planning commission, it's not an easy one. So I think what we just saw was a motion and a second using that concept of let's limit the uses, limit the height of the building, limit the signage, to try to create compatibility and make it the best situation we can. That's the only hurdle you kind of tried to jump so far and you did, you kind of knocked it over. So, so I think, I think what I would suggest the board do, because it's not going away, it's there. Talk about how, what is the best decision three of you can agree on that's the best thing for this community given what we have today, because we can't make it go away.
Well, you said it better than I said. That's exactly where it's going.
One of us has to give.
All right, so somebody else, I mean, there's been one motion, somebody else try another motion, we'll see where it goes. I mean, unless somebody wants to change their vote on the other motion, but. Go ahead, try it.
It's my motion, I'm not going to change it.
Yes, it's Lori's motion. The only exception I would make to Lori's motion is to, is just to allow the childcare. That is the, the only thing that, that I would change in that motion. Everything else I think stands.
All right, you make a motion of that effect?
Yes.
And, and remove the 20-child special condition?
Yes.
No, that's the SUP, we're not going there.
Right, that's the next one.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Like it?
There's a motion and a second. On the motion, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Nay. Said aye?
Leaves me as the Solomon.
There you go.
We don't know yet. I'm thinking about it. I'm thinking about it.
This is where I was a while ago.
No, I, I think it's what, remind me.
The reality of the situation is one of us has to move. It isn't, one of us has to move in, in the decision point. Otherwise, everyone is still left with the bad instrument that we have.
No, we're not. We can, we can get rid of that.
No, we can't. If we get rid of that, you end up with everything. That is a- No, we can't, if we get rid of that, you end up with everything, that is a worse solution for those residents, I'm not doing that to those people, I'm not doing it.
I'm just saying-
I'm going to say aye, I'm voting yes on the motion, we have to resolve this and move forward, I'm-
All right.
You get the childcare with the everything, because that's on the list.
You know, childcare is SUP, not a PUD.
Oh, wait a minute.
Childcare would be under the PUD.
Is childcare, is childcare allowed in the PUD? Yes.
If you were, if you were to remove it from the PUD, it would not be allowed, but if you were to follow a scenario where you said, we're saying no to the PUD, and we're opening the door to everything in neighborhood business, it would be a conditional use, just like it is right now in the PUD.
So you would get it, that's what I'm saying, we're not winning here, I mean-
So it's a PUD with permit, and one of the permitted uses under the, is childcare?
It's a conditional use under the PUD.
Right, right, okay, so we have three to one, everybody on?
I just, I only feel that I'm giving you better than what you were going to have the other way.
All right, all right, let's take up the next one then, I don't know what the vote thing is.
Or do you need us on here?
Too many, too many motions, did you get it all, though?
It, it's recorded, yes.
All right, all right, let's take up the resolution, the rescinding of the resolution, somebody want to make a motion to rescind the resolution?
That one's easy.
19B.
So move, rescind the resolution.
You need the bill number, let's do it right, here.
121.
We move the resolution by bill number 121.
I think that's okay, is that right, that motion?
It technically is.
I, I think you should read it the exact way it's there, in other words, you, I'll read it for you, your motion is to introduce on first reading of bill 121, an ordinance to rescind a resolution of intent associated with the zoning on property located 806 Randall Drive, APN 009-072-01, based on the findings contained in the staff report.
Without any classes either.
That's a motion, all right, is there a second to that motion?
Yes, I second it.
All right, on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, nay? Okay, passes unanimous, that one's unanimous, how about that, making progress, now let's take up the issue of the planning commission's denial of a special use permit for a childcare facility, this one we kind of know, so we're going to overturn the commission, take a motion to overturn the planning commission's denial of a special use permit for a childcare facility, is that right?
Mr. Mayor, before, there's a motion, if I can identify some conditions I've heard in your discussion, that will be either modified or added.
Sure.
For the benefit of the record, I think I've heard discussion on a three-year expiration on the special use permit, I'm not sure if it's an expiration or a public review, I would need clarification on that, the use may only operate on weekdays, Monday through Fridays, the condition in the staff report 13, which limits the, the number of children to 20, would be removed, and condition 14 in the staff report would be modified, that's the use of the outdoor area to read 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM.
Okay, is there a motion of that effect?
Let's, can we clarify on public review on the three years, so what I want is the opportunity for the residents, again, to be able to, so if they, is it a review, then that you could take their permit, if, if they're not living up to the conditions as promised, is that review?
Let me ask a couple questions, are we looking for public outreach, notification, a public hearing at the planning commission, or, or just for the planning commission? Oh, just a staff?
Code enforcement.
A code enforcement thing to say, we're going to take it because the bashers said 19 times now, you guys have had children there after 5:30, and on Saturday.
Understood, so the language I would suggest to reflect what you're describing is that this use perm is subject to staff review-
Staff review.
-after three years from the date of board action, the staff review will review compliance with all conditions, should the staff find any violations of conditions, the staff is encouraged to refer the matter to the planning commission for a public hearing and review.
Okay, okay.
Make it.
I move to, to uphold the appeal, and to overturn the decision of the planning commission on the special use permit for a childcare facility on property zone neighborhood business with a resolution of intent located at 806 Randall Drive, subject to the conditions as stated for the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Suva's at Bagwell, on a motion, further discussion, anybody on a motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Nay, okay, let's take up the last one, which is the variance, where the planning commission denied a variance for, from four onsite to one onsite parking, what's the pleasure of the board?
We have to, well, we have to reverse, we have to reverse them, otherwise everything we did is moot.
You have to reverse the planning commission.
Yes, you do, I mean, otherwise, again, all the actions we took, that doesn't work.
All right, somebody make a motion.
Okay.
Go, go forward.
I move to reverse the planning commission and grant the appeal for the variance to allow a reduction from four onsite parking spaces to one onsite parking space for a childcare facility on property zone neighborhood business with a resolution, do I take the resolution of intent out now, right, neighborhood business located at 806 Randall Drive, based on the ability to find that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including shape, size, topography, and location of surroundings, strict application of the zoning ordinance would deprive the subject property of the privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity or under identical zone classifications.
Mr. Mayor, can we include the four conditions of approval that are on page 546?
Of the, the four conditions of the staff report?
Correct.
Can we clarify the question? Yeah, on that, because you mentioned childcare specifically, for the record, Aaron West, it was limited to childcare, could we-
For any, for neighborhood business?
We had been discussing, we had been discussing approving the variance basically for the uses provided for in the PUD.
We haven't noticed for that, the planning commission action wasn't noticed for that, so that's something staff can work with the applicant on.
Right, I'm going to stick-
All right, thank you, I tried.
And I'll stick to my second.
Okay, on the motion, further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Nay, okay, we ready to close down the shop today? All right, folks, all right, democracy in action.
Public comment?
Public comment, public comment, anybody? Heard a lot already, all right, unless there's an objection, we're adjourned.